Replace federal COVID funding, which is going away, as you know, for the past two years, school lunch has been free for all students in public schools. The House will debate the Ways and Means proposal during the coming weeks, resulting in a final House budget, and the Senate will then follow with their process. It is early to make projections on where this will ultimately end, but I wanted to keep you informed about how the state budget process plays out and where things currently are as of today. I wanted to also provide the committee and the community with an update on the Davis Thayer Elementary School building. I know many in the community are wondering. In January, during the superintendent's report, I updated you that this fall, building principals walked the building and identified items that are being repurposed throughout the district. And we also have a piece of furniture in this room this evening that has been repurposed for, from Davis Thayer School. Both in January and currently, the building is currently in use for some much-needed storage. It is currently holding all of the district and town PPE in terms of masks and hand sanitizer in particular. We noted in January that we wanted to seek input from MSBA, which we were able to do about a month ago, informing them of the steps we have taken so far related to having students from Davis Thayer attending Keller Elementary School this year, because taking Davis Thayer out of the school department's authority could have implications for future building projects. So we wanted to make sure that things were above board with MSBA. And then lastly, and you are certainly aware of this, we've recently established, and we said in January we were going to, and we have established the Space Needs Subcommittee, who's examining space and space needs based on our enrollment and specialized programs and utilization across the district with an eye towards potential building projects and redistricting. So that's kind of the status and some steps that have been taken since January. I particularly wanted to note that we have communicated with MSBA, and we were able to communicate with them, as we said we were going to in January. I would like to congratulate members, this is a big science and math night. Like to congratulate the members of our National Science Honor Society for an amazing evening of science enrichment. I forgot how much fun that night is, because we haven't had it in a couple of years. But the students and their advisors do an amazing job putting together interactive and engaging activities for children. And in addition, I was just so impressed, and you may be aware that I have a science background and I know a thing or two. So I was so impressed with the explanations that the students were using to break down the scientific concepts and explain it to their younger peers. And I think it was really a tribute and a testament, that's when you really know that somebody knows what they're talking about, when they can break it down and teach it to somebody else. I was in every single room and saw areas of physics, biology, chemistry, computer science, robotics, and more, including out on the field between Horace Mann and the high school. Such a fun night and a pleasant return to some of our normal and amazing traditions. Thank you to the students, very well done. And thank you to the faculty and staff who were there supporting them and for the families for coming out and enjoying the fun. I want to use this opportunity to remind the community that the Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Ms. Heidi Harris, is a candidate and finalist for the position. And she will be in the district on Tuesday, May 3rd, from 6:30 to 7:30 here in Council Chambers to engage with parents, guardians, families, and community members. She recently spent half a day in the district prior to April break, meeting with students, administrators, having lunch at Franklin High School, and meeting with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. So the next step in the process will be engagement with families, and we're seeking input and feedback from participants in that process. Night of the Arts is coming up on Friday night. So this is a reminder, should be an excellent night to showcase the arts in Franklin Public Schools and at Franklin High School. It's 5:30 on Friday evening. I'd like to congratulate two kindergarten classes in Franklin, one at Jefferson and one at Parmenter. Congratulations to Mrs. Rogers' kindergarten class at Jefferson and Mrs. Ford's class at the Parmenter Elementary School. Sheriff Patrick McDermott formally announced that they are among a few classrooms who won the comfort dog naming contest as part of an endeavor that they've been doing over the past couple of weeks. The sheriff's department received over 1,500 submissions from 35 Norfolk County schools, and there were many great submissions. In the end, it was hard for them to choose one, so they combined a few of their favorite choices. And the kindergarteners had submitted, among the finalists' names were Teddy, Edward, and Buddy. And so the sheriff's department decided to name the comfort dog Eddie and sent a very cute video of the pup. And students in these classes helped to suggest some of the winning names. They're scheduling a visit for the class to meet with Eddie and help him celebrate. And I will include a link to the recorded video announcement from the sheriff's department about the naming of the comfort dog. Eddie also has an Instagram account, if anybody would like to follow his adventures.
Eddie should get a milkshake.
@EddieTheComfortDog. Let's see. I want to highlight something that has recently gone out to the high school community and is being led by Lily Rivera, our Director of Marketing and Communications, in part, in conjunction with the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. And she is spearheading Project Rain Check as a district-led project that gives students an opportunity to spread messages of unity, positivity, and inclusivity beyond their schools and into the fabric of the community. When you walk through our schools, there are heartfelt messages of community and celebrations of diversity that help create a sense of belonging. And our goal is to amplify student voices and empower a greater sense of belonging in our community by reminding everyone that even in the rain, we shine. And she is currently taking submissions from students at Franklin High School. And I would encourage them to participate in submitting their ideas for messages to be revealed in the downtown when it rains. They will be utilizing invisible spray and stencils to create the body of work. And when applied to a stencil, the ground where the invisible spray was used will repel water, unveiling a secret art piece. And so that is currently underway, so we encourage our high school students to put in a submission. One submission is permitted per student. Must embody the theme "Belonging," celebrating unity through uniqueness, an original work with a proposed location downtown. And that has recently been tweeted out. I'm wondering that, I saw it on Twitter. I'm wondering that it's also out in other places. And it's also up on the website. So we're excited to see that come together and promote unity across the entire town. And lastly, I just want to recognize that we are approaching some appreciation and recognitions. And so I want to use this opportunity to recognize individuals in the Franklin Public Schools. Tomorrow is Administrative Assistant Appreciation Day. So we send heartfelt thanks to our administrative assistants. We have Principal Appreciation Day, so remember to thank a principal on May 1st. School Lunch Hero Day for our cafeteria school lunch heroes is on May 6th. Teacher Appreciation Week is the week of May 2nd to May 6th. And School Nurses Day is coming up on May 11th. So we want to recognize, honor, and thank individuals in the Franklin Public Schools who work in those roles. I also think it's important to recognize the PCCs, who I know have been actively planning for our teacher appreciation in particular. And they are so instrumental to supporting students and teachers. So thank you to the PCCs. Happy to take any questions.
No questions. But I do hope that the public watching will contact your representatives and senators and ask them to pass that budget.
All right, now, thank you so much. Just fantastic news, kind of top to bottom. Really appreciate the report. Just to echo your sentiment about Science Night, I thought that was great. I was glad I was able to get out there with my son, Chris. He enjoyed it thoroughly, and the students did a phenomenal job. They kept the students engaged, and not just the older students, but the young kids as well, all ages. And I think, I think the kids really that went there, got a lot out of it. So that's really, really great. Can't wait till next year, and hopefully we can do more, bigger, and more students. So, great night. You'd mentioned the DEI Director on the 3rd. Is that for school committee as well, or will we have a separate session?
You'd be welcome to attend.
Perfect, thank you. And then thank you for the update around the Night of Arts, because I wasn't aware about that. So I think my boys will probably love that as well. So love to see students just showcase their work and really set the foundation and like the seeds for young students to see what could be done and then really open up their eyes. So, so thank you.
All right, thank you for, well, all this update and for information, I'm informing the community about the latest what we're doing on Beacon Hill with the budget. And I mean, the only question I have is, is Eddie going to be coming to the next school committee meeting? Because I think that'd be really awesome if we could get him in here.
I'd be happy to invite him.
All right, there we go.
See if we can get him here.
All right, sounds good, thank you.
Elise?
I second the request for Eddie. I'll make sure to be in person for that. So just, I guess, one question, Dr. Hearn, about the DT. So what would be the next steps with that as far as the district is concerned? And then as far as us, the school committee members, is concerned?
Sure, so I think the, my recommendation would be to have a conversation with the Space Needs and Facilities Assessment Subcommittee to kind of begin thinking about utilization across all K-8 schools. Consider that in light of our current and projected enrollment and be thinking about what you might choose to do with Davis Thayer.
Okay, thanks. Maybe you said that in the report. I'm not feeling well, so my brain's a little slow. So thank you, if you said that, for repeating it or for clarifying.
I think that was helpful, connected some dots.
Okay, thank you.
Megan?
Hi, yeah, thank you, Dr. Hearn, for the report. And yeah, the Science Night at the school was great. I attended that with my daughter, we really enjoyed that. And I don't have any questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hearn. Next, we have guests' presentations. Dr. Hearn, if you wanted to tee that up. So, so I think at one of the superintendent reports, perhaps, you had made a request, because you were very intrigued in hearing more about the Region 3 Science Fair winners. And so we are joined here tonight by two of them. So I will invite Antonio and Anna to come up to the table here, next to Mr. Jagir. They have prepared a brief presentation for you to highlight and showcase their, their Science Fair projects. Unfortunately, Arav could not join us this evening, but the first place winners, Antonio and Arav, worked together, and Anna came in second place. So you're welcome to come and sit up here at the desk.
Or you can, wherever you're comfortable.
Or...
I will bring you a chair.
Oh, no, you mean if you're comfortable there.
There's a, there's a slide presentation queued up, Mr. Jagir, if you want to help facilitate that for them. You can have a seat.
If you'd like.
And then you can run your slide presentation from there. Does that work?
Yeah.
Great. I also want to note, as they get settled, Bill Bobrowski is attending the webinar. He is our Science Department Head at Franklin High School and has been supportive and supporting the students. And we also have Josh Hanna, a high school principal, is joining as a panelist on the webinar. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, cool. Okay, so I'm Antonio, my teammate was Arav, and...
I'm Anna.
Yeah.
So this is just a little about how the Science Fair works. So most schools have a high school science fair that can then send projects to the regional fair, or they can also send two projects directly to the state fair. But the regional fair is the only way that you can go to the international fair. So the regional fair sends projects to both the state fair and the international fair. We had to start at the regional fair because FHS doesn't do the science fair. But most students start at their high school, so they get that extra round of practice and guidance from their school on how to go through the process.
So my project was, or me and Arav's project, was the PA, the Portable Affordable Wheelchair Enhancer. And what it is, is just an attachment to a wheelchair. Eat, so here, if I stand up here, right? It's just an attachment to a wheelchair. Makes it electric. It's really easily detachable and detachable. You can take it off, put it back on.
What?
Okay, so the reason we have the PA is because wheelchairs right now cost, or electric wheelchairs, cost upwards of, what, $2,000, and they're really expensive. They're also really big and bulky, so you need like, you know, big utility stuff to move them around and like, transport them. So, okay. So what this is aiming to do is to make it easier for people to get an electric wheelchair. That way, they don't need to push around all the time and make it easier for them to be able to transport it around and do whatever, because, you know, that's something that we thought people should be able to do. So, yeah.
What?
What?
That's amazing. I'm just in shock, I'm in shock. What? $150?
Wow.
Sorry.
My project was encryption decoded effects of cipher choice on entropy. And I was trying to answer the questions, could historically-used encryption methods actually be stronger than modern encryption? And which encryption type will keep our private data the most private? Because even though people are trying to protect their online data, there's still a lot of hacking and a lot of data breaches. So I first created a computer program that tested many different types of encryption to find the strongest, including both modern and historically-used ciphers. And after running almost 1,000 tests, I discovered that the modern industry standard for encryption actually was not as strong as an older type. So I then coded a program that digitized this historically-used cipher, creating a new encryption methodology that is better than the current industry standard and offers better security.
You're hired.
I'm so glad. I'm so glad I don't go to high school now. I would be such a loser.
What is this? We could not run this in high school.
Oh, my God. This is amazing. Okay, I'm sorry.
So, so the future plan for PA is to make it, well, first finalize it, because right now it's in the prototype stage. We want to take PA and make it so that people can actually buy it around the world or just around wherever. We want people to be able to get PA. And, yeah, that's where we're trying to take this.
It's pa-ome.
Oh, I heard someone else make that joke earlier, too.
Oh, my God. See yourself out.
I'll be your marketing agent.
And I plan to do a lot more research on encryption and then create a better program to encrypt documents easily using the strong encryption type that I discovered in my research, so that then I can use this methodology to create a new industry standard, which will protect the world's data from future data breaches and hackers.
Anna, I just read today that the encryption we do, like, it's going to be hacked and it's all going to fall apart, and so we need you. Like, I just read that today, that everything is going to fall apart and that like, the Egyptians were really advanced, but then like, everything, everything fell apart. And the only thing they have left is the stuff that didn't get destroyed by nature. So, it's starting harassing me. I'm taking an interest in these young people.
Any questions?
Can we come look at the wheelchair?
Yeah, sure.
Are we allowed to? I'm really intrigued.
I don't see it.
I don't see it. I can see it. You can go play with it.
Can you turn it around so we can see the mechanism on the back?
Oh, okay.
Give a, give a little twirl, yes. Mark it.
It has like a motor?
Yeah, yeah, so it has a motor on each side, with a flying wheel.
Denise, sit down.
And, uh...
Two wheels.
And there's two wheels.
So had, had you done any modifications to the wheelchair whatsoever?
So, no, actually, the wheelchair, you could take off all of the, um, you'd take off all the PA parts and it would just be a regular wheelchair again. The wheelchair wasn't damaged or changed in any way.
Yeah, so it just, it fits, it would be on, on, you know, any, any wheelchair. You know, like anybody, just be able to pick up this one and just slap it right onto the device.
Do they have standard, like, widths of wheelchairs?
They have like, three or four standard widths of wheelchair. And so to make this work for that, all you really need to do is get different sizes and make it slightly longer.
So what was your inspiration moment, you and Arav? Like, what happened where you were like, oh, my God, this is our idea?
Well, we were coming up with a bunch of ideas. We started like doing a few, and then we were like, we kind of just got more interested in the wheelchair project. And then we got the wheelchair at like, you know, at, um, what's it called? A lot of places, you can get wheelchairs for just for free.
Wow.
Yeah, so we got one, and then one time we were, we were trying to like, roll it up a hill, up like this, like really low, we climbed it, and it was hard. So then, then we're like, wow, we should, we should really do this. That was kind of one point.
That's really cool. You're really on Shark Tank right now, we're going to vote whether you could.
Make a pitch. 100% for $5.
Work with the marketing team and the financials.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have to talk to other people on what that is.
It's incredible, and Anna, too, I guess I love, you know, not only is there so much incredible work with the coding that you had to do in order to kind of get to where you were, but also obviously is, there's so much research that you had to do to look at the historical context of, which is absolutely, you know, it's fantastic and it's amazing to hear. This is, this is fantastic, this is a wonderful night. I'm so thankful that you guys elected to come and present in front of us. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Blowing them all geek out about this. Great work, very, very impressive. Just a couple of questions I do have about this. So I see it's battery-powered. Do we know, like, how long, how long does the battery last? And like, how many batteries are in there? Like, what's, how does, what's the duration?
So, right now, we've, we've used this bat, so we haven't done like a full-length test of constant power on. But we know that we've used this battery for like, the first, like, few, the first like, eight months or so of making it. When testing it around, we didn't charge the battery at all. And we had it on for a pretty long time. So we're estimating that it has a pretty good lifespan on battery. Right now, we're using a lithium-ion battery at, no, no, no. We're using a lead-acid battery at 12 volts. We want to go to lithium-ion, so that way it'll last long.
Or solar-powered.
Yeah, and then, like, we'll have to wait for really sunny days. You see them on the highway.
No, but it's amazing. I love just solving a problem of little things that people will deal with, and it's a simple solution. And especially from a cost-saving standpoint, I think, I think this is, this is huge. And it just makes things a lot more accessible. Because I can think of when my mother was in a wheelchair, you know, we'd push her around, but she had this as well. And just, just being able to be on her own and not having to use her arms to move things, it makes, it makes things a lot easier and just more accessible. So, so great, great there. Anna, amazing with what you're, what you're doing. What you, when you were speaking about this, made me think of the Native American code talkers and code breakers, and just how their, their code wasn't broken and it was, it didn't use all the modern technology that we have today. And sometimes we overcomplicate things and think, okay, newer is better. But sometimes, if you just do it the right way, and you don't need to go fancy bells and whistles, you know, you get a better solution. So great to look backwards to, to move, move forwards. So, great job, and look forward to see, seeing what your program looks like.
Thank you both so much for sharing your projects with us. Yeah, this is fantastic. Antonio, to you and Arav, yeah, this is, I mean, brilliant idea. I love that you had a goal of, you know, putting something together that has just a very direct impact on people's lives. It's, you know, just flabbergasted that this isn't already a thing that people can do. So, no, it's, yeah, excellent that you had just that practical goal in mind for your project. And Anna, yeah, same to you. They're just like, I mean, when I read the title of what you're presenting, I was like, I don't know, I don't know what this means. Yeah, so like, yeah, kudos to you, that's absolutely brilliant. I love how just like forward-thinking you are with your project. I mean, I have, I have a hard time remembering half my passwords. So the fact that, the fact that you did this, yeah, it's wicked impressive, so thank you.
Elise?
Yeah, you, you guys are blowing my mind over here. Big kudos to you and just so much gratitude for the different types of brains we have in this world. Like Dave McNeil, I, I didn't understand most of the words on that slide, which is sort of terrifying and probably means that I need better encryption, right? It also made me think about the Franklin Portrait of a Graduate and really just feeling so proud. And kudos to you too, Mr. Hannah, and the Science Chair, who's on the call, whose name is Bill Bob, Bob, Bobrowski. Kudos to all of you and everybody who helped with these projects. Really, we've got these confident and self-aware individuals, empathetic and productive citizens, curious, creative thinkers, effective communicator and collaborators, and reflective and innovative problem solvers. It's just like, you guys are really just the epitome of our Portrait of a Graduate, and we're just so proud and really glad to see you. And get those tippers on that wheelchair, so we could get people in there.
Megan?
Yeah, very impressive. I'm in awe of both of these projects. I've always participated in the Science Fair when I was a student. And I, you know, I just think it's just really impressive what you're doing, so nice work.
Anna, I just had a question. You said that 990 tests, how long did that take?
Um, a long time. I had to, so I coded all of the different types of encryption for the program to actually do it. And then I had to run it on five different documents. And each one, I ran the same test five times so that I could get averages. And then I also did variations of every cipher. So each test, depending on the encryption type, some of them took a little longer than others, but it took a long time.
My mind is just blown, I didn't understand a word you just said. But it sounds, I, I just, I'm... And we're going to be okay if this is, you know, who's, who's coming up. So I think that we'll, we'll do great. Antonio, I wonder, how fast does the wheelchair go? Like, like, how fast can, how fast can we get it?
Before we geared it up, it went like, too fast.
What's too fast?
Down, it went too fast. Yeah, that's, that's my measurement, too fast, a little bit too fast. Right now, it's also probably a little bit too fast, because I don't think you want to be going really fast in a wheelchair, unless you really want to. It could be fun.
If you trick out the wheels. I mean, my kid in the back is like, let's go fast.
Yeah. Maybe we'll keep it fast. But, yeah. That, you can limit down, so it can go wheelchair speed or it could go a little bit faster if you're, if you're like, you know.
Yeah.
If you want to go fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So then your next steps are to get just a patent and start seeing interest for more?
Yeah, the next step, well, we want to like finalize it a little bit more than now, because right now it's still, you know, a prototype.
Yeah.
But after we finalize it a little bit, we want to get a patent on it and then try to like lease it or something to another company that can make it. Because, you know, it wouldn't be that effective if we just made a bunch of those in the garage. And not a lot of people would be getting it. The goal is to get it to a lot of people, so, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, what's next steps for you? Okay. Yeah, what's next steps for you?
Um, so I I really want to do more research. Like, I want to test it in different ways to see if, like, every way I can test the security, if it still shows that that type is the strongest. Um, and then if it, um, if it is still the strongest in every way, I want to create a really good program that can encrypt it on its own with its own keys. Um, and then maybe make an actual standard that can be used all over the internet.
How did you get interested in this?
Um, well, I really like computer science. Um, and I was just doing some research one time and I found that there are a lot of hackers and a lot of data breaches each year. And it was a big problem. So I wanted to research the modern types of encryption, but also some older types to see if maybe there was a type that had already been invented that was better, that just wasn't being used, and there was.
She's using her powers for good, folks, because clearly you have.
I know, right?
To be able to test these models. So we appreciate that you're putting this to protecting people's data.
Like, not like a Lex Luthor type.
Not a black cat.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, that's great. And you guys have a lot of support in school, obviously, from your teachers and.
Yeah.
That's great. Great. Awesome. All right, anybody else?
One thing. Um, so one thing that was mentioned in the slide that I almost forgot, um, that you'd gone to the regional to to get to uh, the next level. Um, and Franklin High School doesn't do a science fair. Do we have like history on that? Like, is that, has that always been the case or?
I, to my knowledge, there hasn't been one at Franklin High School. Um, and I did want to conclude noting that I think there's a potential opportunity for growth here and um, you know, some success to build on. And so it would be something that I think um, that ought to be considered.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you both so very much for coming in. This was really the highlight, I think, of our year.
Yeah.
I can be so bold to say so.
Budget is not as fun?
Nope, nope. Great. Thank you both so very much. We're just beyond the moon with what you guys are accomplishing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We should have something like this every meeting.
We'll have something next. Our meetings will be like six hours long.
Let's just, let's just have this. Yeah.
Oh, she's the chair.
Okay.
All right. So I guess moving right along, discussion action items, nothing. Discussion only items, nothing. Information matters, superintendent evaluation, Elise.
Um, we don't have any updates on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee where we'll review the evidence in May and then complete the final evaluation in June. Thank you. Uh, budget, Dave McNeil.
Uh, budget subcommittee has not met since our last meeting.
Okay. Do we know what the next one is?
Um, not as of now.
Uh, policy, Dave Callahan.
Policy, um, will meet on May third at five thirty.
Okay, um, community relations. Nothing scheduled at the moment. We're still working on legislative forum. Space needs and facilities assessment.
Uh, yep, uh, that's been pushed back. Our next meeting is on May tenth.
Okay, uh, joint PCC.
Yep, and the next meeting for that is on May sixteenth.
Um, school wellness advisory council, Elise.
Our next meeting is Tuesday, May fourth.
Uh, CPAC, Elise.
The CPAC had a great workshop two weeks ago focused on mental health skill building. About twenty-five people were in attendance. Then the CPAC board meeting afterwards was a productive brainstorming session that focused on events for next year. Our next meeting is, I think, in June. I need to confirm that. I'll let you know next meeting.
Um, substance abuse task force, our new next meeting is May tenth. Uh, DEI committee, our next meeting is May twenty-fifth. All right, moving right along, consent agenda, Dr. Hearn.
I recommend approval of the minutes of the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two school committee meeting as detailed. I recommend approval of the budget transfers as detailed. I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling five thousand fifty dollars as follows. Fifty dollars from minted for supplemental supplies and five thousand from the Jefferson PCC for field trips. I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for FHS scholarships as follows. Ten thousand to the Digital Federal Credit Union and eight hundred and fifty dollars from the Carol Maher Memorial Scholarship. I recommend acceptance of two checks totaling one thousand dollars from Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools for supplemental supplies and in-house enrichment as detailed. And I recommend acceptance of a check for three thousand three hundred and twelve dollars from music parents for in-house enrichment as detailed.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as detailed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, questions? All right, seeing none, vote will come in motion, real call vote, Camille?
Yes.
Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yes.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Denise Spencer, yes. All right, motion passes. Um, moving right along, Dr. Hearn, new business.
Citizens comment.
Oh, I'm I'm so sorry. All right, citizens comments. Are there any citizens in the audience, uh, in person or online who would like to make a comment on an item not on tonight's agenda and falls within the committee's purview? Nope.
No one on the.
No. Okay, Dr. Hearn?
New business. Um, so at the next meeting, you can expect a um, a presentation. Um, we had talked about doing a presentation on um, discipline and uh, and then we'll fold into that some anti-bullying practices. There may be policy coming from the May third meeting. Um, we have a highlight uh, in that our unified basketball team has been invited to attend uh, one of the May meetings and we're looking to confirm that for May tenth. And um, that may be a good time for you to uh, elect uh, a represent, your board representative to the BICO and accept collaboratives. Um, so that is uh, what I would anticipate.
All right, thank you, Dr. Hearn. All right, so finally, we will be adjourning to executive session and we will not be returning to open meeting. All right, so pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the FEARN unit. As an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the school committee and the chair so declares. Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to discuss strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive discussion as discussed?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, vote will come on the motion. Camille?
Yes.
Dave Callahan?
Yes.
Al Charles?
Yes.
Dave McNeil?
Yes.
Elise Stokes?
Yeah.
Megan Whitmore?
Yes.
Denise Spencer, yes. All right, so thank you very much, everyone. We'll see you next time. All right, so how do we?
Recording stopped.
Elise and Megan on.
So I think we might need to um, end the webinar. There's no way.
So I think we might need to end the webinar. There's no way.